I re-convene this meeting for the evening session. The first item is to certify the closed meeting.
I'll go ahead and register for your. Do each of you certify to the best of your knowledge only public business matters likely exempted from any other meetings of funds in Virginia Freedom and Information Act, but only set public business matters as per your identity in motion by which a closed meeting is convened, or heard, discussed, or considered that a board supervisor is a closed meeting?
It's a roll call vote?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Mr. Donnelly?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the public comment period. If you wish to comment, please raise your hand. You will be identified by the chair, come to the microphone, identify yourself, and the district from which you come, and if you can leave here, the remarks time of five minutes, that would be much appreciated. Thank you. Sally, who had your hand up first?
I'm Sally Latham Haynes.
We're actually with the referendum.
And I'm here to comment only. Color of this Sperryville Tower. I live on Woodward Road, and I have a full-on view, so I'm really familiar with the color. My partner and I didn't oppose the tower, but we never imagined that it would be painted to stand out rather than blend in with the environment. Woodward Road is somewhat of a scenic driveway, and it's a very popular road for hikers. And the landscape is just not as nice as it used to be. I'm not indifferent to people who may view that tower from the sky, but I think the great majority of our citizens see it against the mountain in what used to be a really spectacular spectacular view, but it's not quite so now. I'm concerned that now they'll start attaching antenna and such, and we will make the bad situation worse by putting quite things on this tower. So, a group of citizens has been collecting signatures, and we've already turned in quite a few. So, it brings more to you tonight. We had collected 151 signatures of people who would like to see the tower repainted, and actually also a few supporters from Coldepper and Madison who were not counting but would also like to see it repainted. So, I'll be giving you these signatures tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
My name is Patty Gill-Petersen, and I'm a citizen of Sperryville, a fine village at the gateway of the Shenandoah National Park. I also am trustee of the Shenandoah National Park Trust. And so, both as a villager of Sperryville and member of the trust, I treasure the mountains that surround us. I also know that we have to do business, and we have to communicate, and we need ways to do that, and we can't just say no to everything. But I think we have a wonderful opportunity and want to pull it up to paint brown. There is no way we would be talking about this in the way we are today if it hadn't been painted brown. And I mean from the point of view of the park and point of view of the citizens of Sperryville, but also all the people who've come to visit us. So, it's not just my view, it's everybody's view. And I know when people visit us, we've gone from, "What a beautiful view," to, "What is that?" I was at a reception where we stood on the deck of one of the wireys on Christmas Tree Lane, and we came out to a beautiful evening, and there it was. So, my sense is that we have an opportunity here to do the right thing, not because it's just a nice thing for our view, but for everybody's view who are attracted to this area, who help the local businesses be successful. And in the end, we have a win-win situation if we do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak?
Hi. My name is Sally Roberg, and I'm here tonight to speak on the app of Shenandoah National Park and also the Appalachian National Scenic Trail, which both have looking down at the beautiful view of Sperryville from the mountains. And just wanted to be here to talk about the color of the tower, and I understand that's going to be a topic of discussion tonight. And so, we wanted to give you our perspective on if the opportunity does arise to repaint the tower, we would like to suggest the painting of the color of brown. And we had suggested that originally when I came before the plan commission back in 2018, and the superintendent also came before the board supervisors in 2018 to talk about the beauty of the park and how Sperryville just blends right in with that beauty. And we weren't against the tower, just hoping that it would be painted brown or constructed of a material that would be a darker color. So, if the opportunity arises, we just wanted to make sure you all know what our perspective is, and hope that you'll take that into consideration. And if you're interested, I also have the original letters that I wrote, that we wrote back in 2016, just to show you what our perspective is, and I can hand this over to you now. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. All right. Carrie Sutton, who had your hand up next?
Hi. I'm Carrie Sutton, resident of Sperryville as well. I own a boat called Shop in Downtown. So, I have a couple of perspectives. One is, as a resident, I once had this beautiful uninterrupted view of the mountains. I now have a big white tower that beautifully glows in the evening because it's so light. So, from a personal perspective, it is destroying the view that we used to have. It's right on the front door, if you can see it. I have to tell you, I was a little shocked by it because I remember the balloon test. I walked up Woodard Road that day to look at it, and I saw the balloon. Later that day, I was in my house looking for it, and I did see the balloon. It was a half an hour later. I was still a little baffled how that tower appears. It towers over there. The other perspective I want to give is a person who has a business in town. We rely, we have a great number of locals who visit our workplace, but we have a lot of tourists, and tourists come to this county because of the beauty of this county. And we put that tower right in the middle of one of the most beautiful views in this county, painting that would actually significantly help improve that view. It is a little surprising to me, if you drive in Sperryville, you can see that tower as you drive in Sperryville. If you go up Woodard Road, if you go up Myron, you can see it from Derby Mountain. It's a little shocking how you can see that thing almost everywhere. And I noticed we've been talking about the view shed and we talked about the other towers. I think we need to think about how we can return our view shed of the tower. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, Mr. Donnelly?
Cliff Miller from Keymont, and I live in Sperryville. Now, I'm sitting kind of high in Sperryville looking out, and we have an inlet that's that is also has some incredible views. This really does mess that all up, and it messes it up not only for us, but for anybody else who's looking at the mountains, which is a dominant view that we look at. We can't take it down, but we can, and that certainly would be a great help. And I don't know the cost, but the cost is not significant to make sure we have a place that moves back then the beauty that we have before. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening. Looking forward to the new board and seeing how things go. I'm from Sperryville. We own a piece of property in view of it, and actually it's right near where Sally lives, and she overlooks that. I was always for the cell tower, you know, for emergency services and things like that. But I spoke, I was talking to someone today, and I said, "What do you call it called?" He said, "You call it a popsicle." That's what it kind of looks like, a popsicle up in the air. So, it would be great to consider, if you consider, you know, think about paying, you know, to get repainted, and I thought brown was what we call it. I didn't know it called the dick, but it sounds like someone's trying to work for it. But it does separate, if you're on anywhere, regular ground or a little bit elevated, it, the background is that little mountain right behind it, and void it really does stick out. And I don't even live out there. I live up in the hollow, so I can't see it from there, but when I go out there, it reminds me that I'm in Sperryville when I see the popsicle up in the air. Thank you, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Is there any, anyone else wishing to speak? Read. Thank you, Mr. Donnelly.
My name is Jill O'Niall, and I live, thank you, sir. I live in, well, my address is Washington, but I'm close to just Sperryville. And I'm here to ask the board to please, please, come to a resolution on the dump. I'm, I work there part-time, and from the time I go in, in the morning, I am yelled at, I am cursed at because of our situation. And I ask everybody to please bear with us, and I've even told a bunch of people today that there was a meeting and that they could come and speak for themselves, but nobody's spoken yet. So, I'm going to speak. So, if I can give everybody's help, and please make a decision on what company you're going to go with, and let's try to make it a lot more accessible to all of our people in the county. Thank you, and I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous.
Oh, Miss O'Niall, thank you very much. I know you and other staff members have been under a lot of pressure, and certainly this new board will do everything it can to resolve this quickly, and most importantly, give a better communication to the public to take the pressure off of you. I know the holidays are very difficult. I saw you down there. We do appreciate everything you've been doing, and hopefully this is the end of your suffering.
What?
And it will just be a job to enjoy, but we appreciate it.
I appreciate you telling me that, sir. And another little quickie is signage would be very helpful, and big letters so that the people can see, because they complained to me about not being able to read. And I said, "Excuse me, but it's right there, sir. Can you read?"
A little better on communication. Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
John Doris, retired captain, Plano County Department, Assistant Chief Mike Williams. We related to purchasing a tanker, Department. We had to bring it before the board. We're looking at, we had three of those tankers we're looking at, anywhere from 2007 to 2021, 29,000 to 3,000, now we're going back to sort of handling frame rockers, 12,000. They are from 320,000 to just 1,400,000.
Tankers we're looking at now is 320,000. A department in this opinion owns it right now, and we're only prepared to lose this tanker if we don't get a decision.
We were already, we were supposed to bring it to your attention before we went any further. We have to stop and bring it to you all. I've been in contact with the department up there. They purchased a tanker brand new with $382,000 for, it's got one tire fault, and the department was taking over for another, for the township selling the truck. They can sell it for a new price, can't sell it for a used price, but sell it for that. They have another department that is one of the side contractors going in. They're trying to hold it for us until we get the pictures.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? If there's no one else wishing to speak, I'll clear the public comment period club. So, if you want to get that out.
I think, Jill, all the supervisors who had a chance to see the tower, and I did bring the pictures, I wanted to give.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the presentations appreciation. Ms. Lizinski and Mr. Welch. The resolution we passed in the afternoon session, Mr. Lizinski reads, "Whereas honorable John D. Lizinski completed his public service to the citizens of Rappahannock County on December 31st, 2019, and whereas it is the position of this board that Mr. Lizinski served this community with detail-oriented intelligence, understanding, compassion, and integrity during his four years on this board, and whereas during his tenure on this board, he held appointments on a number of boards, committees, and commissions, including as a founding member of the broadband committee and the building committee, through which he helped guide important work on critical infrastructure concerns, and whereas throughout his term on the board, Mr. Lizinski was a tireless worker for his constituents in the Hampton District while also being dedicated to the quality of life for all county residents. And whereas Mr. Lizinski was well-studied on the matters at hand and served with quiet integrity, keeping the best interests of our citizens always at heart. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors extend their sincerest gratitude to the honorable John D. Lizinski and wish him all the best in his future endeavors. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread across the minutes of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors so that all citizens may reflect upon the service and accomplishments of this dedicated public servant." Service.
I don't know. There you go. Chuck's got the, Chuck's got the gripping grin here.
Hey, we put you back on the broadband committee.
Hey, there you go.
Not eventually.
I just want to say, it's my honor to serve the community. People of Rappahannock County for eight years, but four on the school board, and four here on the board of supervisors. I want to thank my fellow board members, as well as Mr. Bennet, who's here this evening. Thank the county, county staff, Crystal, Lori. I served under, I don't know, I served under, I served with four county administrators. And maybe that's, so I should thank also John, and Debbie, and Brenda, and most certainly Gary, who, I think without Gary for these last couple of years, the chaos of four administrators over four years would not have been overcome. So, a special thank you to Gary for your, your help in guiding guys in my time on the board. Thanks all.
Thank you, John.
Right. Vermont, thank you, sir. Thanks for your leadership.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
And then we have another presentation, special presentation to the honorable Roger A. Welch, completed his public service to the citizens of Rappahannock County on December 31st, 2019, and whereas it is the position of this board that Mr. Welch served this community with intelligence, understanding, compassion, and integrity during his 22 years on this board, serving as chairman for the most recent 10 years, and whereas during his tenure on the board, he held appointments on a number of boards, committees, and commissions, including the Rappahannock, Rappahannock and Regional Commission, always representing Rappahannock County in the most favorable light. And whereas throughout his term on the board, Mr. Welch was a tireless worker for his constituents in the Wakefield District while also being dedicated to the quality of life of all county residents. And whereas Mr. Welch served with quiet integrity, with the best interests of the citizens always at heart, always trying to forge consensus. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors extend their sincerest gratitude to the honorable Roger A. Welch, and wish him all of the best in his future endeavors. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread across the minutes of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors so that all citizens may reflect upon the service and accomplishments of this dedicated public servant. Thank you, Mr. Welch.
I was trying to hold this down, and wouldn't give a little speech, but thank you.
Never made it easy for you, Ron.
Thank you, John. Thank you, board, for the, for the, you know, anybody that's in this room already knows that this is not an easy job for anybody. And I think I had a lot of help from citizens in Rappahannock, and I appreciate that. Just like to say thank you.
Took in a board appreciation. They purchased you a chair similar to that which you've sat in for 20 years. Geneva can't even use it because it's got your name. And if you'd like, I can deliver that to you.
Next item on the agenda is our old business, the solid waste management operations discussion. We are going to move this around in the agenda some so that we can discuss.
All right. So, the closed meeting went, first session, today's session of the meeting went fairly long. The closed meeting went fairly long. We weren't able to get to this topic in closed meetings, so I believe the board is inclined to amend the agenda to move this item to the last item on the agenda, and then proceeded with a short closed meeting only about this item. I think that's what I heard.
I think that's correct. And so, I think that the motion would be to add this item under, we're going to do the sign ordinance S2, and then have the board discussion as item L come after that. So, it would be moving it to just before item T.
Yes.
And I would put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second it.
All of favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That takes us to review of interim county administrator's exit report.
Just missed the question, this item, the end to the agenda, so tracking the previous interim county administrator, Brandon Garten, exit report. In the attached, this agenda item is a matrix that lists each of the recommendations made by Mr. Garten, provides an update of where we are on that. I printed a copy for you, the board members, in an larger format. Welcome to take any feedback the board may have on it. Many of the items have been resolved. You may want to, in the, for future review, remove those items from the table so it's a little bit easier to track. Many other items are pending the current study by Baker Tilly for the compensation and classification study and review of our draft personnel manual. Then I guess I'll open it to any questions the board may have.
Thank you for updating us again this year, Karen. I know we went through a similar exercise with the same matrix this time last year, and that compelled us to take the action for the personnel manual, which is still out for analysis. But I guess, to my mind, this is just a good touchstone for the progress we are making as a board, but also in reading this, thinking about things that we've not accomplished, I wondered if it wasn't time for you to start your own list. I think that if there's, if there's things pending.
We've been picking up many of those things along the way, actually, in addition to this, but there are others. I, in my list, are those only matters that need to be resolved, so I don't want to distract us from comp plan and the sign ordinance amendments, all that, especially your door top priority.
Thank you.
Maybe instead of giving us an exit report, maybe later on you give us just a midterm report.
Midterm, are you forecasting my demise?
I didn't say what part of the midterm. I mean, maybe it's the beginning of that midterm.
Absolutely.
Mr. Whitson?
No, I just want to thank Mr. Curry again. I know as a new board member, I feel very confident in the foundation you're providing us to do our job, and I think I speak for many citizens when I say that. And this kind, this level of organization is really terrific to see, both from a position here on board supervisors, but also the people out there who want to see county government operate efficiently in an organized way. And I do want to take this opportunity to thank you for your, your service to the county so far and your organized approach to doing business.
I appreciate it. I'll pass that over to Ms. Garten for providing the excellent exit report, and staff for helping achieve these items. My goal of ones, I've said multiple times, is to help the board making informed decisions, whether I like them or not, and whether the public likes them a lot, is making sure they conform to.
Thank you for updating us this year.
So, it's a lot of information to digest. I would suggest if there are any comments or questions or suggestions for path forward on any of the remaining items, just shoot the information to me. I can compile that and keep track.
I think my only specific request would be, should we set a timeline for an updated list that you offered that perhaps embraces some of this, maybe you're...
The board's empowered to do that if they want to.
I think it would be, it would be good to just get a new list.
Let's, let's get the personnel matters behind us and...
Okay.
I think by summer, we can, it's what we can look for.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other discussion of this? Or a slot for jazz?
I was hoping maybe we could just bring it back for discussion next month or a subsequent meeting.
Maybe we could do that for February.
You know, if it's okay with board members, I can strip out of the table those items that have no further action. And would allow you to focus on those that do have further action. And it probably won't appear so daunting. And we can do that for the next meeting.
That sounds like a good way forward.
And just a small addition, I have received constituent feedback asking for timelines and benchmarks for ongoing projects that the board is undertaking. So perhaps we could expand this just to include, it doesn't obviously have to be a very specific timeline for each item, but we're appropriate, at least map out months, years, whatever you believe is reasonable for an administrative standpoint.
So if we can revisit that next month, I think that would be a good path forward. I appreciate your simplifying matrix. Mr. Curry, the next item on the agenda is this very little CWS tower color discussion. I know we had discussed this a few times previously, and it has occurred, not only in my role as supervisor, but also at the planning commission level, this is a conversation that persists. And just because, I think that I understand this best, I just wanted to say, the most recent feedback I've had on this was that we sort of got the number from CWS of $25,000 to paint the tower. And the concerns that I hear are that, and I understand, we didn't really dig into that or look at other options that we could undertake to paint the tower, but not necessarily pay them in full to do it.
CWS did seek bids and received more than one bid. Of course, it's their asset, and they want control over the type of painting and application method to protect their asset and not have to repaint it again in a couple of years. And that's, their recommendation was for the 25,555. It's possible that CWS would be willing to cost share, but as the board is aware, state code precludes you from linking this in any way to one of their active applications.
Correct.
As a condition of approval for one of those active applications.
Correct.
So if the board is of a mind to change the color from the current color to a different color, I think CWS is willing to participate in that. Your permit approval provided for a different color was deemed appropriate to camouflage. So you would not have to reopen that permit. It was approved through the condition that was flexible for the board. So really, at this point, if the board wants to do that, simply have to take that position and fund it, or possibly open a discussion across year of funding with the company, independent of any of the applications.
So what about the idea of putting out initially, figuring out what's going to cost, and then before we budget it, have our budget, we go out to the community and some donations for that. I understand volunteers donate for a period of time where they pay donations, and then put it together.
Our timing, I would think, is of the essence relative to the installation of public safety equipment and cell equipment. We understand Horizon is very interested in going on the tower, T-Boe has, and our county infrastructure should be on, you know, a matter of months. So if that's the case, painting that tower when it's bare is.
Well, this county asset, the view shed is really important to town, so it would be a wise investment. We haven't heard anything saying, we've heard some people from their view, but there's, I didn't realize until we were actually in the middle of it, it could be painted by halves or sections so that it blends in in different heights or for different views. And I think if we come back and paint it all brown, and somebody else thinks, hey, that part of it should have been blue and, I mean, I don't want us to look like a candy cane or a barber pole. But, you know, like the special, if you remember, you would paint one side, one color one side, the other because you're looking at different views.
CWS presented some other towers they have where the bottom half was painted a darker color, the top half was painted light, and that's where view shed, higher parts against the sky. I think it would be pretty tricky to get it half and half, front and back, because of that 360 view perspective. There are no doubt a handful of people who view it with the sky as a background, and it blends in quite well. Right now, for those handful, the painting parameter would be a detriment to those few people relative to majority. I see it minus.
The tower that's on the East End property at the end of the day, I think is a pretty good example of how brown can work. I've been noticing that a lot the last few weeks, obviously with all the leaves off the trees. I'm not an expert on tower aesthetics, but.
The tower in Amesville would be a good indicator of how it would look to those on the hillside.
Right, but, you know, I hardly noticed it then, it was about night. Yeah, no, it depends. If you're heading, well, you hardly see the tower in Bevy if you're heading west. It does blend in very well.
So if the board's of a mind to fund this, earlier in your meeting, we discussed the post-dispositional program and whether to fund that from your contingency or through from the fund balance through the upcoming budget amendment, which, if you recall, that's what's included in my draft amendment. If you were, and earlier today you said we'll do contingency. And I think if you did that, you may not have enough for this. So if you were of a mind to pay for this, you could do it from contingency if you also decided to pay for the post-D out of your fund balance through the pending public hearing. That's not a confluence. Which means you could decide to allocate funding to the town without waiting for public hearings and subsequent supplemental appropriations and whatnot.
You're saying this is an allocation of funding.
From contingencies, you could also seek to recoup funds from the citizens if they're willing.
But the post-D, the funding of the post-dispositional would have to be changed?
Right, it would just, it would go back, it would be part of the budget public, budget amendment, public hearing next meeting, which I don't think would necessarily preclude us from using the service if it's necessary within the next month.
Okay. And Loudoun County is now waiting on this imminently for?
There's not, there's budget in that area right now that could fund short term.
Okay. I have a non-financial question. How do we get the color right since we're going to redo it? I mean, who's the expert? I mean, who do we look to for guidance? I mean, brown as an idea makes sense, but.
I think empirically, you look at what has existed then to new. Obviously, you know what that looks like. I would strongly suggest that something, it'd be something that without, that's flat. And if there's a way to do that, that would help too because of the reflection of the sun.
Presumably, CWS will wait.
I would rather not pick the color.
But I mean, possibly the Shando National Park might have some resource on that because we do stuff like that, I believe, view shed, and it affects the park as much as anybody. Because you can see it from, how much of the skyline drive?
Not a lot of skyline drive, but in other areas.
Two overlooks, it could be said.
Two overlooks. So I don't know if maybe we all up at the park, it's maybe a suggestion.
I'm sure we'd be happy to. We've suggested brown, but there's just different shades. Yes. Do you think there's any way to negotiate with CWS on the pricing, or do you think that's precluded by us having pending applications?
I think everything's negotiable, and it just has to be pretty clear that it's not in the same conversation.
So their bid was 23,000?
That was a bid they received from a vendor.
Oh, okay.
That actually has to go out there and climb the tower.
Right.
So it's a way to do some sort of match. So it's not the full 25.
If you want this done quickly, you could authorize up to a certain amount and authorize staff to negotiate the best deal we can get. Then I think that maybe puts it in my hands, and I'm not in a position to decide the tower application. So it can't be considered to be a contingent.
Or anybody else, you could power somebody other than board.
Say we authorize $20,000 and pound over you to make the best deal, and you're not involved in any votes, so we're okay to do that.
I think that's fairly safe.
So we say, so I'll make a motion that we allocate $20,000 to paint the tower, and that Mr. Curry, county administrator, is a negotiator to get the best, he's put their negotiating the best thing possible.
So if I could ask you to add on to that to not fund the post-dispositional program from contingency, rather include it in the upcoming budget public hearing. And this $20,000, this is a contingency.
Right. Should be enough, if not, if you're very nice enough.
Right. This gives me more leverage on this mark. All right.
That's a motion.
Do you have a second?
All second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Is it possible to get the agenda of this period also on the chair?
There should be one behind you. They're both asleep this evening, all seven.
There was a conversation earlier in the meeting during appointment of planning commission members as to whether the number of planning commissioners appointed by the board, which our local ordinance states as seven, but state code states can be between five and 15, whether our local ordinance is binding upon the board. Mr. Goff performed some research earlier, and depending on that research, I think the board was of a mind to potentially appoint additional planning commissioners. I believe you summarized that correctly. This is an item that was added to the agenda, so you will not see it on the screen or on the paper. And Mr. Goff, what have you found pointed to that item?
Well, the first question was, is the limitation to seven planning commissioners violative of 15.22212? My opinion is no, it's not. The code, as it's written, allows for the locality to make a choice of the number of planning commission members, which of course implies the right to choose that number because the, our handicap code sets that number at seven. It's clearly within the number of members allowed by 15.22212. And it also provides, as required by that statute, that the members be appointed by the government body. Therefore, Rapid County ordinance appears to me to be valid in its face. Absence some defect in its enactment, fatal to its initial adoption, the current ordinance is valid, and for another reason. The Code of Virginia in 15.21427C states that there's a presumption that ordinances adopted shall be deemed to be validly adopted unless some provision of the Virginia or United States Constitution is violated facially by the ordinance itself. And I refer to Covell versus Town versus Vienna, 280 Virginia, 151, 2010 case, that holds that the same analysis is true for 1427 as it is for 2285. So I think that the statute is valid and that the current board is bound by it. So in order to increase or decrease the number of planning commissioners, you'll have to go through the regular amendment process pursuant to 15.22285B, which means it has to be referred to the planning commission, and then a public hearing has to be had, and then it has to come here for a vote. And you can do that in a joint, again, a joint meeting of the planning commission and the board supervisor.
So good, and I'm looking forward. Getting close to this thing. There's, because there's no provision for us to appoint the extra members now, there's no restriction against us just appointing people to be citizen advisory components for the planning commission, except for what we get when we hire the Berkeley group.
What this says is that they have to be citizen members, all appointed by the government body, all of whom shall be residents of the locality qualified by knowledge and experience to make decisions, provided at least one half of the members appointed show the owners of real property.
Does that, those are for planning commission members that we would appoint later after the zoning ordinance amendment?
So citizens who do not vote on planning commission matters, I think you could appoint any committee you want formed. It may be more appropriate for the planning commission to appoint some.
These people that I, the people that I had thought about proposing would be able to help start getting some work done while this is in the process.
Perhaps the planning commission themselves would form a citizen task force to aid them in their work.
Yeah, I just don't think they'd be members until you changed it.
Right, well, we've been calling, but I just think that we should have, we could get something going because the planning commission has been brought down for at least three years now. So maybe we can figure out within five minutes what to call it, and just appoint some members to help do something heavy lifting that needs to be done. We did with the Berkeley group, they, Chairman Mayor David Goff, he said that they haven't approved it, and Mr. Curry said he didn't need it approved. We're in a similar situation right now. The planning commission is a creature of the statute, and it is subject to the appointments of this body. I don't know why we can't go ahead and appoint a group to work with them.
Yeah, I would say you would just want to make sure that they are positioned to work within a combined force, the sum of the parts is greater than the individual.
Right, not that they will be working with, but that's how you're, the guidance of the planning commission structure as it is.
Madam Chair. We appointed, we appointed board supervisors representing the planning commission earlier today. We also appointed representatives from the board design appeals to the planning commission. From where I stand, I think our work for now is done with respect to the planning commission. And while I appreciate the need to accelerate work on pending ordinance revisions and comprehensive plan, but with that decision made, being to engage other citizens in the hands of the planning commission pending a change in the zoning ordinance if we were to go that route. But the way Mr. Goff has laid out his legal research, which he conducted very thoroughly, I don't see any reason why we would be making a decision tonight to expand the number of seats on the planning commission.
I have to say I agree, Mr. Wilson. We wouldn't be expanding it. It would just be citizen task force passing through the planning commission.
Yeah, I think, I believe that that decision could come from the planning commission itself and you would be better in light of the ordinance integrating.
I understand that if there was a politic role, but they have not wanted that. They have been steadfastly opposed to getting work done and having helped to do that, including powering the Berkeley group.
Right.
So with all due respect, your plan's not going to work. So you're sending your plan right back to the same people that have rejected our proposals for two years.
Well, do you have any planning questions, Seth?
By two members.
Well, we do actually have a new appointee from Wakefield District.
Yeah, it's three.
And we have a relatively new appointee from Piedmont District. We have a new board supervisor representative and a new BCA representative.
So that's after the board.
And so that's four of seven.
I was there for a long time and I'm pretty sure that with that a little bit of extra help, we're going to get the same question.
Well, I think that, I don't disagree. And you know that I think that more hands would make for a lighter workload on that commission. To me, it's just common sense. However, with the change on the commission, perhaps this is an item that they should address at their upcoming meeting before we begin.
Let's see. I'll report back.
But from my point, I'll show up and let them know I think it was a good idea.
Well, if I have a commission in the board, that will be the message that I bring to the planning commission, but I will report back how successful that is.
So I'm just trying to drive this along. Is there a consensus among the board, the, whatever you want to call it, group? Citizen task force? Do you recommend that the planning commission form one to assist them? Is that the consensus that you're seeking?
Well, the thing is, if it's such a planning commission, then we're going to be squabbling over on that side group at that point. Not pride, just tribe, maybe be surprised. Yeah, you're right, I would be surprised.
And if there's a recommendation on board?
Yeah, as Mr. Goff has referenced, legal research, as a governing body and the code as written, I don't think we should be in a position to make a decision to expand membership for individuals involved in planning commission decisions at this time pending any kind of changes on the ordinance.
And I did want to echo.
Count it worth it.
Your, to thank you, Art, for looking into that in the very brief time that you had between earlier today and this evening to provide some background information as well.
You're welcome, my pleasure.
So any further discussion? That takes us to Art's five.
Which is a deferment from earlier of the advertising requirements for government personal wireless services facilities applications. As board is aware, C W S submitted two applications, application for a tower in Scrabble, application for a tower in Woodville area, the elderly property. The planning commission held a public hearing, public hearings for both and then held a second public hearing for the Woodville site. Ultimately, the planning commission recommended the board approve the Scrabble tower in the form of a monocle that is painted a corporate color and recommend the board disapprove the Woodville tower, even in its proffered lower one-hundred-and-thirty-nine-foot height. With that said, the planning commission's work on this matter is done and it's now before the board supervisors. Code of Virginia and your local code require you to hold public hearings for each. And the Code of Virginia sets the hundred-and-fifty-day shot clock before which you must approve or deny. And if you don't meet that, then it's automatically, they're automatically approved. The applicant entered an agreement with the county to extend that by an additional sixty days and that brings you to the end of February to make a decision. I received communication today from C W S and there was some backing for it. But ultimately, what they've said is C W S would like to defer action on the Woodville cell tower application, PWSU nineteen oh eight oh one, until such time as we can adequately address the concerns expressed by the planning commission members at the December eighteen, twenty-nineteen meeting. As such, we are willing to extend the telecommunication shot clock through April thirty, twenty-twenty. Thank you for presenting this to the board supervisors. In earlier communication, I reminded Ms. McCreary that the board previously indicated they wanted an extension on both. She understands that and they would like to move forward with the Scrabble tower without an extension or offering an extension for the Woodville tower. All that said, included in the packet is a draft public hearing ad that needs to be in the newspaper for a public hearing and staff has recommended throughout this process that that public hearing take place not on a government or a meeting night because of the expected number of people. And after polling, board members on availability Monday, January twenty-seventh, between your availability and the availability of the high school tomorrow morning, Monday the twenty-seventh at six P M worked. I'm not sure if the board would like to move forward with that based on the proposal from C W S and hold just one hearing that night or you could reject their proposal to extend and hold both. But you must hold public hearings for both before making a determination. You do not need to accept their proposal, it needs to be a mutual agreement.
Office, Mr. Wilson?
For about thirty people who were here or weren't here earlier, we did approve contingency fund spending for an engineering study, basically to determine the theoretical propagation from Austin and Sperryville towers as those would relate to towers in between. And I think that's an important step in harming our county government and at least being able to evaluate from an empirical data standpoint what these towers mean in terms of, do we need them as urban network or not? I think the shot clock offered from C W S is actually good in light of our earlier decision because it gives us more time to collect the data from that study and hopefully analyze it to make a good decision. In an ideal world, I'd like to see both of them extended since they've offered one. And I don't know if they would be willing to consider putting a Scrabble tower of the same extension.
I opposed that earlier and we did not. However, if your response is, and there's no opportunity for dialogue or negotiation right now through the internet. But if the responsive board is the only way you will extend the shot clock for the one is if they're both extended, they'll take it or leave it. Then it's up to C W S to accept that. And if they don't, you would have to be prepared to go to a public hearing for both at the date you decide to set up for handling.
Can you make that happen dead mine?
Yes. But it.
When will I have to get back to you to?
I need, it needs to be in this week's paper.
So it's up to them whether they'll agree or disagree.
And they would be, they would have to decide tomorrow, basically. Or you could decide tonight to bypass the process and knowing that. I would think that if the Scrabble site is built and populated with cell equipment, it, I believe, diminishes their position of the need for the remaining tower. But they, or accrue it. And that's the path they want us to take.
Did you have any idea how long the propagation study's going to take?
I was told I will have the information to forward to them. Now we've expanded requests, I assume they can still do it.
I wonder if there's, is there a way to conditionally approve this? Based on your response from them, you're going to next fight in the business tomorrow?
Yes, I think you can authorize me and Michelle to advertise the both public hearings as shown in this ad. If by the end of tomorrow, we don't have approval from C W S to extend the shot clock for both to the April date they proposed, knowing that if they say no or don't and you've lost that opportunity to push the one on, possibly. Or unless, it depends on the latitude you want to give me to negotiate with them. Or somebody, you can empower the chair to do it. Or somebody.
Yeah, C W S has demonstrated a willingness to consider and expand the shot clock. I would ask them to put both in there. It's been a long review process already. I don't think April is that much longer in the grand scheme of things. And I think C W S would respect us wanting to have our own independent evaluation with which to make a reasoned and informed decision. So I ask them to consider extending the deadline for both, knowing that we may end up just back where we started in, which should be okay given the likely predicted time of the conclusion of the engineering study.
So is that a motion offer, staff to advertise as shown unless we receive agreement from C W S to post on both?
I'll get better at articulating motions.
All second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That takes us back, I think, to the regular discussion items. S one, Flint Hill voluntary fire rescue borrowing local government approval.
It came to my attention, Ms. Dwayne, actually, I believe, that Flint Hill voluntary fire rescue has an interest to purchase a new twenty-eighteen bumper truck, which you heard about earlier, in public comment as a principal amount of three-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. I'm not sure the current fire rescue members from Flint Hill may not have gone through this borrowing process, bonding process before. I certainly have not. I understand the company nine years, half a few years back, but IRS code, section one forty-seven, have, IRS Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six, requires that for the elected public body hold a public hearing to consider and approve such borrowing when using this particular type of bonding method. Again, I've never gone through this, just read the code. Based on that, I requested a Flint Hill voluntary fire rescue for the board's benefit, details of what the company plans to purchase, why the purchase is prudent and information showing that the company has the necessary predicted revenue stream to support the borrowing, thereby not financially stressing the company to the point that they may in jeopardy of continued service to the community. Flint Hill representatives did provide some feedback. I asked for it to be sent in a more formal manner, letterhead, so it would be easier for me to digest, which it did not receive. So ultimately, at this point, public hearing is required by the Internal Revenue Code before the board could take a position on this and that public hearing needs to be advertised in your typical manner. That public hearing could be set for February third. I've also noted that if you would like, you may consider referring this to the Fire Levy Board. That would delay the process if you were to refer to the Fire Levy Board to get into the details of whether it's appropriate, the piece of apparatus is needed, what the consequences to the community are with or without the piece of equipment. So right now, staff is looking for direction from the board on when you would like to have a scheduled such public hearing.
Just refresh my memory, was it the association that was working on the full inventory of all of the vehicles? Or was that?
The Fire Levy Board has attempted to do that. And I don't want to speak for the Fire Levy Board and the chairs here.
You're doing great.
It's not, it's not, those items are not required by the annual audit. There's been some discussion of expanding the annual audit to include assets and liabilities. And the board supervisors funds operational funds for the companies and do not fund much capital. There has been some resistance, I think is a reasonable term, by the companies to have the county board get too involved in their capital decisions. They are independent companies. So while, yes, there is some work at the Fire Levy Board to try to capture apparatus, to get an idea of long-term potential capital, spend needed to be viable, it's not concluded in any way that I understand.
And then also, the other component that I seem to recognize played into this was if we knew what we had, we would know where it could best be utilized.
Yes, so ultimately, each fire company is an independent company and theoretically, they are positioned through their board structure or chiefs to determine what's necessary in their district. And they're the experts to make those decisions. That said, bonding, the IRS, the Internal Revenue Code requires such a public hearing for some reason. And it means those companies are acting as agents on our behalf to terror fire rescue. So I don't know the legal ramifications of what happens specifically if a company were to fail and a big bond was floating out there. I just don't know those answers. Those are the sort of things we would have to research before the public hearing, so you're making an informed decision after hearing's concluded. Or you could test the Fire Levy Board with them.
It would appear to me that if the government body has to hold a public hearing before it may approve something, then we have some liability.
I don't know why you would have to hold a public hearing if you have no liability, but it's certainly a question we would want to fully consider and understand. You would want to fully consider and understand before taking the action after the public hearing. There may be other forms of borrowing that are available to Flint Hill that do not require this kind of bonding and this kind of borrowing, this kind of public hearing, I don't know.
This is similar to an industrial development bond.
Possibly.
Which would require us to be the factors of.
I don't know. I don't know. So many details would need to be confirmed, understanding that what the board is approving, what the risk is.
On the embedded question of whether it would be appropriate to send this to the Fire Levy Board to look into the details, Mr. Fraser, since you've been serving on the Fire Levy Board, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the primary scope of their responsibility is to look at each company's P&amp;L from an expense standpoint, not necessarily or even at all looking at capital equipment.
No, but they have no authority to make decisions of whether somebody is viable.
Right, so sending it to the Fire Levy Board would be surely for the sake of providing expertise and viewpoint for people.
For review, but I think that you have to have two problems. If it's going to address any of my opinion, then we would need Mr. Curry or Mr. Goff for both to check into the liability issue of it. When I first heard about this, again, you know, if it's like an industrial development authority bond where we have to hold a public hearing, or it wants to be held in a locality, and we're basically the backers of that bond. This isn't a private loan from a bank.
Madam Chair, another company for has done an amazing job in getting more volunteers, getting your building together, getting just out and called more, which I do greatly appreciate. My concern, given the audit that I read and speaking to others in the county, is this the right time to make a jump like that when you're still building your foundation, basically? I don't think there's a sense of urgency, other than there's the potential for missing this one tanker. It's my understanding that there's trucks available all the time, and it sounded like you've already seen three others. I would like to recommend that we can hear from, I had asked if Kevin Williams and Todd from Chester Gap was in favor of this, and I thought that the answer was yes. I went and met with them and found out that they're not as comfortable with it either. I just, I wonder if it wouldn't make more sense for us to try to figure out how to help you in the next four, five, six months, get your numbers really strong. I understand there's a study, survey coming out shortly that will show us, you know, the improvement that you made, which is great, and try to get your audit straight and what was recommended there as well, and then come back to this body and say we're ready. I do appreciate everything you did.
So if a board is going to hold a public hearing, it would have to be on specific borrowing, is my understanding. So I heard earlier that maybe the truck may not be available if it delays too long, so that particular vehicle may be problematic for Flint Hill if they wanted to charge for just based on the timing that it couldn't happen till February the earliest because the advertising requirements now, if that's a problem, if they are thinking they want to move forward regardless of what they're going to commit.
Does the audience allow us to speak on the street?
If the board wants a member to address the board, you can.
Ms. Dwayne?
So one thing, as far as their letter that they're asking you to sign, and being Assistant Chief of Cheches Gap when we went through it, if you look at the letter, if they have in bold letters there that, for what the board would be signing or what you would approve, which Curry designed, of it says in bold letters that this approval does not in any way constitute any financial involvement or obligation of municipality in there, in what you would be signing. Basically, what that is, what you're signing, looking into it, is basically stating, that you're stating that they are a fire rescue department within this county and that they are providing firefighting services and everything for the county. That's what is on that. It's the same company that we used at Chester Gap when we got our tanker there, and they just require this form to be signed, and then there's a public hearing held after that to force, so we can just basically document public was for or against and everything. That meeting was held right at the station. We were the ones that conducted that meeting. We opened the meeting, we closed the meeting. The company was present and everything.
How did it, in any way, shape or form, to death compensate for the language that says the government will body?
I'm sorry?
It says that the governmental body will do that.
Will do.
In the public hearing.
The code may have changed since.
Yes, it could have changed since we had our, when we had, it was basically.
When did that happen?
The county administrator had to sign it when we got out, basically.
But he had no authority to do it. We didn't tell him to do it.
Well, this has been three or four, five years ago.
There's a pretty good document linked to the board docs.
Yeah, the county had to sign it in order for us to go forward with that meeting. But when we done it, the public meeting was held at our station and everything. Like Mr. Curry said, it could have changed by now.
I don't remember it happening, but I guess it did.
But the one thing I want to go on record for, as far as what Ms. Donahue was talking about, I've only had one conversation with someone from Flint Hill about that, and that was when they called to ask that this be signed. No one has asked, which they don't have to, as far as my opinion, whether for, not for, against, or anything. So I haven't spoken to anybody there to say, whether from being this county employee, whether supported or not supported as emergency manager and all that. I do think there's some things we can look at. I'd like to know, like, what's there, why do we, why are they needing it and everything? What is there? I did ask, and a gentleman called to ask that this be signed, a strategic plan as far as what the truck's going to be used for, why they need it and everything, as Mr. Curry stated, we hadn't received any of that. So as far as conversations with them from my office, for, against, or anything, none of those have happened. This is what they may have reached out for, to get this signed.
And the purpose of the loan company requiring that and being there during their meeting is, the loan company measures the positive and negative responses. If the negative responses are heavy, then why should the loan company loan the money? And that's what their meeting was with the loan company, five years ago.
And one thing with this company, if they go through them and get the loan, every year, they have to turn in their taxes and a copy of their current audit. This company looks over that to make sure, like, basically, basically make sure they're going to get their money, that you currently still have all the money, you're still bringing in money to pay the payments and all that. So right now, for Chester Gap, they still have to, every year, along their payment, turn in their copy of their audit and their taxes.
So it's like the code has changed in 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue.
Sorry, Madam Chair, Mike speaks.
Mr. Stacey?
No, Mike, I think, sorry. Mike can come in for.
Just wanted to add also, all of our pieces of apparatus in our building is paid for. Our newest piece of apparatus is our 2007 Smill fire engine, which is 300, back in the day was $374,000. Two years we had it paid for. We just wanted to add that, see if that helped. We do plan on having, planning on having a bunch of fundraising that dues. We do have a whole list on, we brought them in. Our biggest one is our boot drive. Just wanted to add this.
I did find it interesting when I first started talking about this, why a 501(c)(3) has to have permission to suspend one, and that I'm still not sure I clearly understand, but I do know that if something should happen to you guys and couldn't be able to pay the bills in the law scheme, it would be a big loss to this community, so.
It seems like we don't want to send it down to the Fire Levy Board.
Well, I would make it certain to you, and ask some of these questions here, we've done a liability issue that I was concerned with.
So that's the main thing, I think, we need to concentrate on, the liability issue, and then once we figure that out, moving on to public hearing, depending on how that washes.
Well, I think the continued solvency of Flint Hill is a concern and it should be addressed to the public, everybody's company. So I don't think sending it to the Fire Levy to review it, with the meeting coming up, I don't think that time, I actually do any work on it. We have meetings on the 21st. If you look at the board makeup, the only fire-related people that are on it are the association rep and the fire chief. Everybody else is a non-fire fighter. So for them to be able to look and say, do they need it, is it fit in their district, is not an answer that the majority of the board can answer.
I don't remember your name, I apologize.
Mr. Curry, you were saying that you needed more information on why we needed it, you know, what we were using it for, and why we thought it was useful to us. As you said, we're getting more members, but we're still on a load on it. A fire engine requires more personnel to do the proper job of a fire engine or a tanker. You can go out driver only, and you can still get it done by delivering water, shoveling water back and forth to the scene. So therefore, you have less personnel per vehicle, and you can still get it out and do what you need to do with it. That's what we're looking at.
Curry, is the liability side something that Mr. Goff can help you?
I'm sure he and I can review this section of the Internal Revenue Code. If the board wanted to, I reviewed the linked information enough to convince myself that the board needed to hold a public hearing. If you ever might potentially move this forward, that can only happen with a public hearing. And I'm sure if one is held here, it meets the test, so you could authorize staff to advertise a public hearing and come back to you with the analysis of the borrowing method, the risks involved, so that you have that information as input to your decision made after a public hearing, and knowing what's at stake. So we can move it forward as quickly as we can with every third meeting, and hopefully provide you all the information you need to know what's at stake to make it, to make the decision.
Do we have a decision that we're required to make after a public hearing?
Yes, if you approve it.
Approve it.
Yeah. I don't know if that, if you deny it, if this necessarily kills it, it probably informs the lenders. But again, that's all information that we can bring to you.
Yeah, I think, I'd be inclined to make a motion that we hold a public hearing and run staff to help us understand better potential liability associated with this, and finally clear guidance on what the vote would actually mean, or the decision would actually mean, given that this seems to be more IRS-related than us approving or denying, but you have a couple of these rights to do this.
And I assume that a public hearing would be next, maybe?
With the motion, do we have a second? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Does Asher Lee give the excuse to sign ordinance amendment referral to the Planning Commission?
The board's where your last meeting, discussion regarding the sign ordinance as relates to the types of signs that are allowed at your volunteer fire rescue company properties, and a common discussion regarding the sign that was installed at the Amosville Volunteer Fire Rescue Station. At the last meeting, the board directed staff to develop an ordinance amendment that would permit by right the use of signage that has been installed at Amosville. And so what myself and Mr. Goff and Mr. Summers did is draft a resolution that encompasses an ordinance amendment that you could, by passing the resolution, would be referring the specific language included to the Planning Commission, and directing them to hold a public hearing on that matter, and requiring them to report back to you in a few days after the first meeting of the commission after your referral. They do not report back within that period, you can move forward with your own public hearing. So what is critical here is if the board would like to pass a resolution referring the matter, that you do so with the language that you are comfortable considering ultimately in your public hearing. And I've shared this draft language with the board previously, and of course, it's been on board docs. For that, there's no doubt will be support for an amendment such as this, and for, I guess, those against an amendment like this. It largely, or generally, removes the elimination requirements for signs of a certain size from county, school, fire rescue company, or county creating bodies such as the rectory, library, water service. It also essentially grandfather's in the existing location of signs of those located in locations which may not be in keeping with the current ordinance setback requirements. With that, Mr. Goff, I agree.
He said back with prior.
That's right. Oh, some of the existing, I should give you the background. Mrs. Summers, myself, Mr. Goff, visited each of the fire company signs, each of the school signs and county signs, and reviewed them, took measurements, took photographs. Some of them do not meet current setback requirements. Some of them may preexist 1986. It would be subject to an earlier standards. But to the extent that that is, could be not clear, this would make it clear that the signs that are currently located are acceptable going forward for future signs.
Without signs requiring setback requirements?
If, yes.
This is only a size up to a maximum that's already spelled out in here, that would allow it to be electrically built.
This maximum sign signage was set to fit the largest sign, which is the current Amosville sign, which is rather large, understanding right next to it, but it's quite a ways off the road.
I think this fits what the board was looking for the last couple of months.
I will note that the Planning Commission held a public hearing on amendment to 170-94 that would. that would, with language to add fire rescue companies to the paragraph M that would excuse the companies from filing for a permit for certain types of signs. They, the Planning Commission, recommended this board not approve that recommendation, I suspect partially because they knew this was end of works. That public hearing is scheduled for your February meeting, if you are inclined to hold it. It would not be needed and not recommended by staff if you're remined to pass this. We do believe that permits should be applied for, for these type of signs, even if they are allowable by right. It sets very clearly on the record what was installed, when, and then it meets the confines, and you have that zoning permit, which is very important moving forward for, you know, future non-conforming, if the ordinance changes, they would have a piece of paper for that.
I'm in favor of this. I would put this forward in the form of a motion.
That's your approval of the resolution?
Go ahead, second. And this is to send it down to the Planning Commission?
Correct. So this is referring to the Planning Commission, for them to hold a public hearing on this specific language, and to provide their recommendation to you within a hundred days. After this happens.
Do we have a motion, or do we have a second? All second. It's Rob Hovle.
Do we have discussion, sorry?
Yes. Do we have further discussion?
Thank you. I do have several questions in the Flint Hill area that are concerned with the wording here, and what I was hoping maybe we could edit, the located on property owned or leased by organizations listed in paragraph C above, or on other property not owned or leased by them, but by permission of the owner of such property. I think to commit to put some sort of electronic signage on a property that you don't even own is a little extreme, because it could end up in the middle of a field.
Well, first, that sheet C should be D, so.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. You want that at 50 times?
Which one, what are we talking about?
In paragraph E.
Oh, oh, the reason for that.
But it should be D.
A, B, C, D, E.
In paragraph, in paragraph C, it should be D.
Okay. So, but the part that you're worried about, Mr. Don Hey, is by permission of the owner of such property?
Correct.
Yeah, we were wondering about the Flint Hill sign, and that was actually the inspiration for that line, how it sticks out on the corner of Futterstock and Zachary Taylor, and we didn't think that that was property owned by the fire department, and so we thought, and we don't know if it leased it or not, so we thought that they had looked to me like they had just wheeled a little, those little wheelie signs out there and sat it there, plugged it in with their sticky cord. So I don't know where the Flint Hill guys went.
They started running.
That's why that's there. And sure, you can, I tell you what, you might want to leave it in there now just to find out, because maybe you want to put a better wording in there, once we have a public hearing and talk to Flint Hill. The purposes of today is to get it down to the Planning Commission, I'd leave it in just to, you know, to keep the realm of possibilities open as to what that's really supposed to say.
Mr. Curry, you mentioned at the outset that you wanted us to settle on language that was close to.
It's cleanest and clearest direction to the Planning Commission, this specific language. And let me just add to the discussion relative to the location, and I had this conversation with Mr. Don Hey this morning. There is some risk with this language in that fire companies could have off-carta signs nowhere near that station. And you could insert into immediately adjacent parcels or something like that to condition to narrow.
Well, also, there's the aggregate.
The aggregate sign, they might have one sign and it's a mile away. But yeah, the 7,600 square inches, they can have four signs, but it has to fit in that. Totally agree.
I don't mean to do this whole discussion, but as a citizen watching the back and forth on the Amosville sign, I'm still left with the question, the sign is up, there seem to be procedural problems at the Planning Commission. They finally went and did what they did. I'm not looking to tear the sign down, but my question is, aside from, aside from a change in the ordinance along the lines proposed here, that Mr. Goff and I talked about it, is, I've just received a lot of constituent feedback in the last few days, very concerned about this, I'm just trying to rethink administratively, how can we work with Amosville without opening a Pandora's box to electronic signs all over the county?
Staff has already come to the position that we would support a special exception, request application by Amosville Volunteer Fire Rescue to see illumination other than external illumination. That's already provided for in the code, but it requires special exception, they've been disinclined to do that.
If I could, I cannot, we keep it to mind, I'm pretty sure that those signs have not been approved, have they been applied for previously? But I don't know why there's this argument that it would be signs all over the county that's specific for X number of locations, and maybe not any one of them are applied for. So, but I really could do, in my case, but where that argument comes from, that they'll be all over the county. This is very specific as to where it applies to.
Well, it does say, right, any county government for such other boards or authorities created by schools, fire departments.
Right, but it's still very lengthy. We only have a couple pieces of property that this would apply to.
I don't mean all over the county in terms of frequency, I mean geographically, and I have to say that while I accept the Amosville sign where it is, it's, I've been driving past it every day for the last three weeks, and it's, it worries me a little bit paving the way for a sign like that to go on other locations. I think Amosville, for me, is acceptable largely in part because of its location right on 211, but then I think about Washington Volunteer Fire Department leading into a scenic town, I think about, think about Flint Hill, and what signs like that would mean to those spots. And like I said, I've received direct constituent feedback from people within the Hampton District, which would include the Washington Volunteer Fire Department and residents who live near the Flint Hill company. So I just have concerns, having received that feedback, having talked with Mr. Goff previously, thinking that this type of amendment makes sense, I'm now questioning if there isn't a better way to accommodate what Amosville has done at great expense to them, but not opening this up in a wider way.
Really, I mean, I guess you specifically don't want it to little worship in Flint Hill, because the schools, the high school already has one, the elementary school is down the side of it. The water and sewer code, you can't hardly get there if you don't have it. So I don't know where it sounds good on up there.
About the idea of striking the paragraph E, and also just striking everything but fire departments? And I'm wondering if there's any tone down that could happen, because I'm provided with a day of thought and every second in place, because it's so abrasive and bright, and I just wonder if the, the, I know we haven't went to school, but I've never, I've only heard complaints about one at the school since the day it went up. So, usually, I'm about to think frankly, the signs there, if there was some way to like just tone it down a little, and maybe kind of off at night or something, but even in broad daylight, it's, it's very bright and distracting. So, I, you know, I know it serves a purpose, but I have also received a lot of complaints about it, and I think there's a little fear of the unknown, by, you know, allowing these signs speckled throughout the county, even if it only is at fire departments and schools and governments.
But if you were.
At least we could just tone it down just to the fire departments, and hope that they would be not so bright.
But there's already one at the school.
And I really count, I don't think it's basically exempt in any way. I always thought the school property was exempt anyway. Not necessarily, but county government property would be exempt, it's already in our ordinance. So if you tone it down to just fire departments, as you say, you use your phrase, tone it down to fire departments, you haven't done anything. The argument is spacious, because we're saying that they're going to be all over the county, but they're only going to be at specific locations. I mean, the only two that I hear a problem with is Little Washington and Flint Hill. But the real reason, if the real reason is to not find a way to fix this, then what are we doing this for?
Well, I think we should restrict it as much as possible. I just don't think lighted signs come on at that point.
They have a lighted sign, and I love lighted signs. No, I'm not one of the few. People like to know what's going on, and you don't have to look at it when you go by there, but it can be used for a lot of things, not just a ham and oyster dinner and advertise that, but an amber alert, a fire.
No, I get that, I get that, and it would be really nice if there was a way to portray that information not so abrasively, but just a matter of aesthetics.
I think Amosville has indicated that they'd be open to turning the sign off at night.
They said that.
I think that they would be open to any.
We talked a lot about the view shed tonight, you know.
The Amosville sign cannot be turned off at night unless you go back every day to reprogram.
Okay, well, maybe it could just be turned down.
It does have two brightness levels according to the specifications.
It might have some brightness levels.
And you think it automatically dims at night? Or it could be reprogrammed.
Yeah, I mean, just to put a finer point on what I said, I'm not speaking of Flint Hill and Washington, because they're in unique locations, it's just those are the ones relevant to the calls that I've received. And so when I think about those locations compared to Amosville, it's a much different scenario. That's, and again, I talked to Mr. Goff about this draft, and in principle, supported it, but as I've thought more about it and heard from people, including this morning, I'm just trying to think of a better way, because I have no problem with the Amosville sign. I agree with Mr. Parrish, it's pretty bright, but again, its location on our one major highway is a bit of a saving grace. I just, I feel like this is too much of a non-customized solution that just opens us up to more electronic signs that really don't fit everywhere. And by everywhere, I mean at all, at all the companies and all the locations. So it becomes back to special exception.
We're talking a maximum of seven. Well, they couldn't apply for a special exception or a special use permit and give it approval. It wasn't going to happen.
This is the body that would approve a special exception?
Yeah, now, but not before.
Well, it is now.
Right.
Now's now.
Right, and.
And I'm not sure that this board would approve it now.
I would imagine you would approve, if you were remined to approve this ordinance, then you probably would be able to mind to approve a special exception for only one of the signs permitted by this ordinance.
Yeah, that would be better. I don't see how we can discriminate against one company or another.
Special exception is intended to consider site-specific conditions.
I understand, but you're trying to do something after the fact, and hate to discriminate with them, I don't see how that's going to work.
The county didn't set the timeline on.
The county told them.
County recommended application for a special exception many, many, many months ago.
But it didn't happen.
Well, I, for one, would support a special exception for Amosville, and I would certainly entertain with an open mind any other requests for special exceptions from other fire companies, recognizing that each site is different.
After the same one?
I want to make sure it's clear that there was a question of whether the interpretation of a local ordinance that would provide for a pathway for a special exception for an alternate illumination method was valid. The zoning administrator and consultation with county attorney issued a determination that it was, and included the code-mandated statement that determination could be appealed within 30 days. That determination was not appealed, and as such, that determination is a thing decided, and it is valid.
Unfortunately.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Rob Hovle?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser? Mr. Don Hey?
No.
Mr. Whitson?
No.
Mr. Parrish?
No.
Aye, for me.
Motion.
Now, is it possible to make a motion for a special exception? Do we have that authority?
No. It relies on the company to apply.
They have to apply, then we got to have two public hearings, one in the Planning Commission, like we've already had before, though, and they're not able to mind if they're going to be a pair of E.
I've done everything I can to convince the company that staff supports it, we're pulling the forms.
You were informed for this.
I was, we were directed to do this, and we did this, you said you liked it.
We directed you to do this, you were supportive of this, and then they voted down, so what's the next step? The next step is to tell them to do something that they've been afraid to do for months.
I'm not going to get into that.
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to make factual comments here, because this is a process.
I think we just need to, maybe if we feel like special exceptions go forward as individual board members, then perhaps something to do with the reach out as an individual board member and encourage Amosville to perform a special exception.
Yep, and once that application is submitted, then we can.
You'll have to vet it by the Planning Commission, and those public hearings done by them, or it comes to support for a public hearing.
And that you do not have to hold a public hearing, I can immediately refer to the board if that's true. They may.
The problem is, you just keep dancing around with it, and how, how do they know how to act, it's kind of like what we're doing, we're doing the same thing now to the people with these signs that Mr. Sharpe complained about earlier with this thing. Nobody seems to be going in the same, same direction, it's like, somebody said here a couple of years ago about grabbing the hand, they said, at least for the Keystone cops, they were all eventually going in the same direction, but on the ID thing and on these signs, we've got the thing up here in Sperryville, we're not going in the same direction.
Well, if that's make the question, what the staff activity within the sign enforcement has been as of late, and what are the intended actions of moving forward on sign enforcement?
It's also pretty sacred to manage present by the board.
Our next agenda, ID. So I guess I'll just. Yeah, so a discussion, one of them, that was moved out from the earlier meeting. So I do wonder what staff activities have been regarding signs?
So, I'm receipt of the 20-page FOIA request from a local attorney. Stack reviewed that, and. Staff reviewed that and given the time of year, decided the problem wasn't the best use of our time just before the holidays to issue a number of letters. But zoning administrator will be looking at each one of the alleged violations in that letter and sending friendly notice to the locations who have confirmed violation to let them know that the, that their signage is not in keeping with the ordinance. And they may not be aware of what the ordinance says, giving them an opportunity to debate that issue. And if they don't do that, then we'll move on to the next step, which is to notice a violation.
How many is this included?
Well, there were a number of alleged violations. There's significant research that needs to go into whether they are actual violations at the time the zoning administrator visits. A lot of them are old and the illumination portion of the ordinance was put in much later than the zoning ordinance itself. So a lot to be reviewed.
Then will there be documentation of this research available to the board?
Sure, I mean, the file will have to be built to substantiate the full portion.
Then will the board be kept in the loop on enforcement activities?
Yes, ultimately if enforcement takes the long road, we'll have to notify you, confirm any bringing any court action. We aim to let you know before that.
But you don't anticipate, is that the administrator sending out 40 letters all at once?
They will, no, they'll probably be batches of types of signs based on her ability to field document. Everything that she does has to be in a way that ultimately would support a court action.
Right.
I would be very happy if she would attack the federal signs first.
What type?
The big ones, once you go up to the ceiling and walk around.
The federal.
In it's, it's, they're.
The federal.
Right, well, this is items presented by the board, so any other items for the board?
I have a quick one, I was really excited to talk about this, it's now nine o'clock, so I'll keep it to two minutes, one minute. I want to thank Gary for putting me in touch with Oliver Price of Rappaport Electric Cooperative. I'm sure some people here have seen that REC has been clearing right ways to ensure electrical reliability. Quite bluntly, REC's contractor Pittman left a huge mess, including large ash trees that they, that were fumbled into the Rush River, creating a potential flash flood issue. This was all on Harris Hollow Road. And Mr. Price, who was here earlier today, I just want to commend him for reacting quickly and for REC getting their contractor back out there. And also I want to commend REC's forester Percy Montesinos, who I thought handled the landowners very, very well. The contractor was out there on Christmas Eve Day cleaning up large ash trees that had been left behind on the previous cut. And Mr. Montesinos, I'm sure would prefer to have been with his family when he was there to make it right. So I want to commend REC for making this situation right after a few landlords were very upset with what had been left behind. Just want to make sure everyone's aware of that. And I should, I want to encourage the public, if you see any right-of-way clearing that is left a mess like we saw on Harris Hollow Road, please let county administration know so we can get it cleaned up.
Can I have a chair?
Yes, Mr. Stonehead.
The one thing that I would like to bring up is the idea of education and classes for the board and others on the planning commission and that type of thing. I know we have a set budget at the moment, but I do believe many of us would like to attend and be educated in any way we can to help the county. So I just wanted to bring that up as a potential increase in the budget.
There are a couple of key training hours coming up through Baco, the new board member class indoctrination. We've been looking for the date on that, I'm not sure if we know that. And there is a chairs and vice chairs session coming up, Mr. Parrish.
I attended that, it was very helpful.
So if chairs or vice chairs are interested in attending that, let admin know, we'll run down details. If there isn't enough budget in your training line, like it's $3,000 total, there may be an opportunity to transfer around inside your budget or sign contingency. Training is one of the areas that I would always advocate. Fund to extend the campaign.
Mr. Wolfowitz, do you think an advantage in having someone to kind of teach planning here to us? Since there are several new members of the planning commission.
In my last locale, we had Mr. Chandler come to BZA and sit with the BZA for an hour or so and run through this thing.
He's been out here twice, once we conducted something, he was with the library and then he did something down here at the fire hall back about four years ago.
So we can look into, I'm not sure who was hold it, I'm not sure if he's actively engaged anymore, but.
He just had health issues. But he is the guru of running and saving.
Was it somebody that the Berkeley group offers or is that not?
Have the VCU group who's now heading that up, I'm sure we have people I can look into. But you're talking about land use, correct?
I did want to mention, just to follow up on our, our joint meeting with the planning commission back in November, it was willing this board to work through the analysis from the Berkeley group at the planning commission level and have all of that resolved before bringing it, not for public hearing, bringing it back to us. And at the most recent planning commission meeting, there was discussion of already advertising for a public hearing when the map had not been addressed and also further analysis of chapters three through five as requested, or recommended by the Berkeley group had not been addressed by the planning commission. And so at that time, it was tabled pending the seating of the new members of the planning commission and feedback from them. And I just wanted to bring that, especially, you know, passing the torch to you, Mr. Fraser, on that. I know that you were at that November meeting and are very aware of that, but that, that movement is afoot to publicize and I, and I did feel it was hasty given the outcome of the joint public hearing.
As I said, we're reluctant to know certain things forward.
Other items for consideration? All right. Well, I think that moves us into the discussion of the landfill that we were picking up earlier today had to be moved to the evening session.
Do we need to go back into a session?
Uh, yes.
So we'll go back into the closed meeting for discussion of refuse and recycling contract terms, scope and expenditure.
So if you'd like, I can personally say forward to that. The adjournment section of this meeting contemplated potential continuing this meeting till January 27th, which would be the date of the tower public hearings, which may or may not happen. So we recommend that the board, that when we get to that point, adjourn, we'll work through a special call if we do in fact hold those hearings on the 27th. I can go ahead and advertise them well ahead of that special call, through that process and make sure that FOIA notice is made. FOIA notice would have to be made if it were continued anyway, so it's not that much of a difference.
They're going to advertise before a special call for the meeting itself?
We have to, yeah.
They'd have to authorize you to do that.
You just did it earlier.
I mean, it doesn't make any sense.
Well, this is government.
We're going to, although I did have that for a meeting.
If you'd like, I can contact the chair tomorrow and have that special call signed tomorrow.
That would seem a bit more appropriate.
So I wanted to clear that before maybe there's some people.
Yeah, thanks for keeping track of that.
Okay, so I don't have a permanent motion, but I would do it. So I'll read a closed meeting motion before we request somebody to move to the second. And then after the closing, we will come back and open meeting to discuss the solid waste matter. So unfortunately, people would have to go downstairs and then the discussion will probably take under 15 minutes and then people can come back.
So we could go in the room.
Or we could go in fact, that's.
Or they can take you out.
So just want to make sure it is clear. So closed meeting will be for the Rappaport County Board Supervisors to conduct a closed meeting according to Section 2.2, 3711a, to the gene for the purchase of, discussion of the award of a public contract involving a substantial public fund, including dinner support offers and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract for discussion in an open session would adversely affect a bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public contract. Section 2.2, 3711a, 2011, subject matter of the closed meeting will be refuse and recycling contract terms, scope and expenditure.
Miss Yaw, you're welcome to call me tomorrow if you want, if you want to.
No, I just need to stand up, I haven't sat that long in the room.
Yeah, if you don't want to stick around, one of us can talk to you tomorrow.
Well, um.
She needs to stop by the office. Or stop by the office.
Okay, um, do you want to go?
It's a team.
I can come back up at 15:00.
We can, we can go to the back room.
No, indeed, I'll go downstairs.
The jury room, then Luke and.
You guys can stay right here.
Just stay here.
That's true.
Yeah, just stay right here.
Okay, so roll over.
Going to close session, Mr. Fraser? Stone, hi.
Hi.
Mr. Fraser? Who is that?
Come on, first, he's been here a long time.
He's been here the whole time.
He's been here a long time.
Kathy's been here the whole time.
I know, but she's, she's related.
She doesn't want to sit here and walk around. But look at Robert Sage, right, he's a special bonus post, he's not an old retired guy, I think. He's probably got a life. That's my point.
And he calls back to Luke.
All right, Richard Bean, that was the close session, thank you.
To each of you certified that to best your knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Geneva Information Act, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closing meeting was convened, were her discussed or considered by the board, the supervisors in the closed meeting.
Mr. Wolfowitz? Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Mr. Stonehead?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Right. So just coming out, I'm just, I'm looking at, or whether what's discussion or actually am I going to take as a result of that conversation?
For the public's benefit, just the, the board and staff is continuing to work with Page County and Updike, Efficient, Brola, whatever company, they're multiple companies, on options going forward. And we've made a lot of progress with both of those potential partners. We've, board updated on their latest, latest offers, accepting motions that are appropriate. We don't need it in my agenda. Maybe appropriate to ask me to.
Yep.
Get out the equipment necessary, should we move forward with this?
I'll move.
Hold on a second.
Mr. Whitson? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Was there any other additional correction you're looking forward to, Mr. Carr?
I believe so.
I think that completes all of our agenda items.
I apologize if that's opaque.
That was Francis.
Yeah.
Forward.
So move to adjourn?
Yes, based on earlier discussion, given that we don't know whether the January 27th public hearing will take place or not, I recommend you adjourn and then call a special meeting if that happens. And I'll try to have that ready tomorrow.
I will adjourn, a motion to adjourn?
So I move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.